Basically, my neighbor on the west, Barbara DeZonia, I don't know if she's here. She's going to be put in a shade and she has a garden on his side and she's afraid that she's not going to have enough sunlight. The structure actually is about 14 feet and when it'll be finished, it'll be 26 feet. It will be 12 feet higher than what it is now. And on my side, I felt that there was going to be a shade on the sun side if the sun gets there. But in the back end of my house, I feel that I deserve to have the sunlight because I have perhaps the only one in a block, what we call an environmental dryer. In other words, I have an old fashioned clothesline and if that thing goes up, I would not have any sun on my clothes to dry. It's not very important, but it's still a detail that I didn't think that at that point my neighbor cared about. So, there is also another problem with that building and that is a few houses down, there is another applicant who wants to build a three-story building. And he hasn't started because the whole neighborhood has been against the idea. For basically the same reason, that the character of the neighborhood, which is Stackel and Singles, is going to be destroyed. And our neighborhood deserves the right of having a preservation source, just like the preservation park in Oakland. It took them 10 years to do it. And I think in Emeryville, we need that on our side of Emeryville, the north side of Emeryville, which has a significant historical background. Because that side of Emeryville was the early side of Emeryville because it had the canal. And that's why our street is called Ocean Avenue. And the early settler Portuguese, Italian fishermen had the blessing of the church that is on Alcatraz there. So our street, my street where I live, had a canal there. And my house, from what I found out, is the first one who has been on the block. And other houses came after. So because of that, because of the special character that our street has, I'm objecting about the second story. Not because of the story, the second story in itself, but because the character of the street is going to be defaced. And it's very important for me and I think it's very important for my friend there. Thank you for listening. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Richard Ambro and I live at 1264 64th Street, one block to the south. But I'm a neighbor and I'm concerned about preserving our neighborhood's character. And I was concerned when that house caught fire and was damaged, severely damaged last year. And I was gratified, I was really happy, when I saw signs that the house was being rehabbed, it was being restored, it was being reconstructed, new foundation and so on. Then I saw signs of a new second story. And I asked and it turns out that apparently was no permit. I'm concerned about non-permitted construction in general. It increases the number of cars on the streets. We have, yeah, there are too many cars on the streets on my street and it could happen also on Ocean Avenue if additional units are added in that area as well. It would also destroy the roof line of the facade along Ocean Avenue. The houses to the west are one-story and most of the houses to the east are one-story. This would change that roof line. It's true, it's the building in back is two-story, but that's off of another street. Along Ocean Avenue, they're one-story, except for one exception. And I'm concerned about that too. I'm concerned about the precedent that it would set. Two ways. One, it would set a precedent that it's okay to destroy the character of the historic buildings in the neighborhood for profit, for demolishing and construction of new units, new houses that has been proposed for building, to a building to the east. Also, I'm concerned about the precedent that might be set that if someone trying to construct a new floor without a permit is caught, that it's okay. You just go ahead and submit your proposal and you go ahead. So it sets a precedent to try to construct without permits. And there are other instances, you don't see them, they're internal, but they exist in Emeryville. And it increases the number of people living there and increases the number of cars. We should be careful of our building codes, we should be careful of our permit process, we should be careful of many things like that. So anyway, I recommend that the application be denied. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Keith Bodwee. I live at 1254 Ocean and I pretty much concur with everything that's been said here. And, you know, it's just starting to feel like a tough fight over there and I just feel like we're losing so much in our neighborhoods and development is just encroaching and I just feel like, you know, we're barely hanging on. And I think anything, I think, you know, at what expense do we let another house go, another house be radically altered, another house be taller, another person in the neighborhood loses their son, loses their view? As someone who's, you're all aware of the situation with the house at 1258, which is next door to me, as someone who's facing that, it's really, really depressing. I also just learned that that house in Vallejo is going to be torn down now. So, you know, I just think, as a citizen and someone who lives in Emeryville, who's been here a decade and who really loves it, anything that can kind of stop this trend of everyone being able to cash in and even at the smallest level, I mean, that house, that property has two, two single-family houses on it already. Like where does it stop? Where do we draw the line? So, that's all I really want to say. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this matter?
Jim Martin, speaking as a resident within 500 feet. I just, I'm glad there was finally a landscape plan. If the commission decides to approve this tonight, I'd hope that you at least ask and clarify the parking issue. To go from a two-bedroom, not even have a floor plan, but to go from a two-bedroom and to grandfather in a four-bedroom unit, which is already underparked, the entire property's underparked, just is a little challenging to me because on-street parking really is in demand in this neighborhood and it's going to exacerbate the problem. If you do give this applicant additional entitlement, I see no reason why the city can't expect the entire property to be improved. The rear unit needs painting, the yard needs work, I don't think the landscaping should be in the 10 feet in the front. And I don't think, we've gone through, the commission has gone through this before in the Triangle neighborhood, looking at what it means and looking at the entire property. We shouldn't allow concrete to be poured up and around the building to simplify the landscaping. You don't even have the information here to determine whether you've got a three-foot fence or a six-foot fence. No one could take this plan and go out in the field and know what they're doing here acceptably. So, I hope that you give staff direction, if you approve this additional entitlement in some form, to make sure the entire property gets upgraded as part of the benefit that this property owner will enjoy by the additional units. The second story actually will mask some of the ugliness of the building in the back, but there are concerns about light and maybe one of the ways to address that is give him three bedrooms, pull back the footprint of the second story so that you've got something that still respects the original roof line around the building. But I think it just has a ways to go to clarify the parking issue and this whole idea of grandfathering and that if he's getting something more, he should be improving that property so it does not look like it does right now.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing no, okay. Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioner comments?
I'd like a point of clarification regarding the illegality of the original construction on that building. What's that about Charlie? Because it's not in the staff report.
There was some confusion about this. This project came through during the period last year when we were in the process of amending the RM zone regulations. And also, there's another ordinance, the residential demolition ordinance, which now requires design review for single-family homes. We were under the impression, when they first came to the counter, we didn't realize there was another unit in the back and we thought that this was a single-family home. And we hadn't gone to the field, we just were presented with plans at the counter and we looked at it and it, you know, said, "single-family home." Well, previously, a single-family home would have been exempt from any kind of zoning approvals, design review, use permit, you know, it, single-family homes were sort of sacrosanct. We issued a building permit for reconstruction of the existing house that was damaged by fire. And of course, I mean, that was okay, that was a replacement in kind, so no kind of planning permit is required for that. A building permit, of course, was and we issued that building permit. They also applied for a building permit for a second story. That was a separate building permit that was applied for. We were in the process of reviewing that, but as sometimes happens, construction began on that second story before the building permit was issued. It was at that point that we realized there was a second unit on the lot, which meant that it was not exempt from design review as a single-family home. So now it did need design review. So we did not issue the building permit for the second-story addition because it now needed design review. And subsequently, the RM zone regulations were amended, so it also now needed a use permit for the floor area ratio. As soon as we realized this, we sent the building inspectors out and issued a stop-work order and told them to stop work on the second story, which they did. And they have not done any work on the second story since then. We advised them they now needed to come to the planning commission. Whoops, I guess my time's up. Sorry, I can't speak anymore. We advised them they needed to come to the planning commission for approval of the second story and that there was no guarantee they would get that approval and if they didn't get that approval, the house would have to be restored back to its original one-story condition. So, that's what happened.
Thank you. Commissioner comments?
Well, I kind of go along with what Jim was saying, that I think the maintenance of the entire property needs to be one of the conditions of this thing. I haven't looked at it and certainly we need a real landscaping plan. And, you know, I think the landscaping plan should include the entire parcel and should meet all the conditions that we currently have about drainage. I guess that's all I have to say.
Yeah, it seems like, almost like we're in a study session for this applicant. And my only concern was the parking, but then it was brought up. So, from a two-bedroom to a four-bedroom that has no parking, I don't know, it seems like you could do something like the woman who came in here earlier and showed that plan of having a nice little, at least one spot where she had a nice garden and landscaping details there.
May I respond to the parking issue? I think maybe there's some confusion about that. The zoning ordinance for two or more dwelling units requires one parking space per unit for studios and one-bedrooms and one and a half parking spaces per unit for two-bedrooms and larger. So if you're two-bedrooms, three-bedrooms, four-bedrooms, five-bedrooms, you have to have one and a half parking spaces. So increasing this unit from two-bedrooms to four-bedrooms does not increase the parking requirement. If they were adding an actual unit, and I heard one speaker imply they were adding another unit, but that's not the case, it's still two units, they're just making one of them bigger. Under the zoning ordinance, that does not increase the parking requirement. So the degree of non-conformity with the zoning with regard to parking does not increase. So we have really no authority to require them to provide more parking.
Except that they're increasing their FAR, or at least they're requesting it.
Well, the zoning requirement for parking is not based on FAR.
Understood.
For residential.
What is the FAR for that area?
Just changed. What is the code, say? .5, 0.5, and that can be increased up to .75 with a use permit?
Oh, it can?
Yes. That's why the second.
You said FARs are absolute, they can't, they're never changeable. That was on the other part.
Well, no.
Nevertheless. Now, they weren't flexible, but they're flexible now.
I wouldn't approve it as it's drawn here.
I'll go next. I really would like to see a landscape plan and I don't want to see any sidewalk in the front. I think there needs to be a treatment that minimizes concrete and hard space in the front. The city has been trying for many years to eliminate concrete in front of residences and I really think we need a landscape plan. I don't know if it necessarily has to come back to the commission, but we could condition that that be submitted to the planning director and he review it, you know, listening to what we're saying tonight to make sure that everything is in compliance with what we're looking for. For example, not higher than a three-foot wooden fence along the street frontage, adequate landscaping.
That is already in the conditions. It's a standard condition of approval.
What about the, some maintenance on the rear?
And then also, I think it has to be for the entire site. One question that I have is, I wanted to get back to the windows and on the second story and the location of the windows, it's really hard to tell from these drawings, but no one brought this up, so I will. It's just the whole issue of privacy and for the bedrooms up on the second level and the orientation of those windows, is there any concern that we need to look at in terms of privacy, looking down into the units on either side? I mean, it's hard for me to tell with the drawings. I don't think it's a problem, but can you speak to that? Do we have any concerns or are you concerned about that, Gail?
There's only one window.
Oh, and there's one on the other side too.
There's two.
One looks like a bathroom window.
There's a house on both sides.
Yes, there are one-story houses, single-story houses on both sides and, where are we? Elevation's here. And, excuse me a moment while I bumble around. Yes, so on the east elevation, you can see it's, it's a little, a slightly larger, well, the size of it is called out to be the same as what's here, but as it's drawn, it looks slightly larger. And there's just one over here. The house, Mr. Carpio's house that is right next door, is oriented this way. So where the window would appear in the second story would be, you know, approximately here.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And then what about on the west elevation? There's going to be two windows there.
Okay, on the west elevation, this survey, for some reason, shows the building at 1270 as here, but this is actually Barbara DeZonia's garden shed. This is not her actual house. Her house is oriented almost exactly in line with where the front building is on the site, the subject property.
Yeah.
Okay, on the site plan, it does, it shows that in fact 1270 and 1268 are almost directly in line. So the positions of the windows on the west elevation, since it's staggered to the back, would probably be around here and here. So they would sort of correspond with where her house is. I unfortunately do not know the location or the positioning of the windows on her property, but as it stands, they will overlook it because they'll be higher than.
Yeah, I know, but it's just a question of, I know, we've heard from residents in the past about concerns about, you know, privacy and not so much even looking into the home, but into the yard. So that's why I was asking.
It looks here like they're not looking into the yard.
It doesn't look like that, but I just want to make, I just want clarification on that , Buzz.
As a boon perhaps to the folks who move in here, she has nice planting areas back there, so they'll be able to observe her roses and her raised beds.
The rear yard, rear house is two stories already?
The rear house is, it is the same as the proposal here. It is two stories, but it's staggered in the same way. It has, you know, it looks like the same thing. In fact, during the course of my research for it, I pulled the building file, of course, and this unit to the rear that fronts on Peabody actually had started out as a single-story unit and then was increased with the second floor. So it was increased in the same way that this is proposed to be with the original.
When was the, when was the other one done and was it permitted?
It was and it was done, I believe, sometime in the 80s. And yes, the only reason I know about it is because there were permits pulled, they're in the building file. So this, where the roof line is now will be staggered back from the street about 11 feet, as I said. And on the unit that fronts on Peabody, it's the same situation. It has like a low, almost a, you know, it's actually, there's actually like a sitting area on the unit that fronts on Peabody. It's that much of a stagger and it's a flat roof there. And from there, it increases in height to 26 feet, which this will echo and they'll almost sit like bookends to one another on the lot. Does that somewhat answer some of your questions about the orientation of the windows?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to propose that we approve this application subject to the planning director enforcing all the conditions that we discussed.
Which were what, landscape plan?
Landscaping, maintenance, the back building.
Of the entire property.
Paul, did you have any comments?
No, I think that a landscape plan is appropriate. I just wonder what the standards and the standards are for submitting documents to the planning, or to the planning department? Don't we require a floor plan at least to? Don't we have, don't we have a handout that says you must submit this with your plans and a floor plan, an existing floor plan and then the revised floor plan, something like that?
There probably should have been a floor plan with this application. Pardon? There probably should have been a floor plan with this application.
Okay. So, it's difficult to read what they're adding and where the windows are and how they look on the adjacent property without a floor plan. So that clarification, I guess we had to get secondhand. I would second Mr. Hoff's motion.
I just want to be clear on what these conditions are. You want a landscape plan that covers the entire parcel and specify that less concrete in the fence, in the front yard in the fence, no more than three feet.
And that the drainage issues be dealt with.
I'm not sure what you mean by drainage. Are you speaking about stormwater treatment?
Yeah.
Well, for a site this small, it's just what we call best management practices.
But you talked about the fence, you mentioned the fence.
I mentioned that. Now, there was something about maintenance of the entire property?
I think that, I had gone by and my impression of the rear property on this lot is that it isn't in very good shape. It's not very well-maintained. There's broken concrete at the front on the Peabody side with weeds coming through it. It's in, it's in need of a lot of help and, pardon me? Paint, it's in need of paint, it's in need of, it's in need of significant maintenance and I'm not quite sure how we would frame that condition in order to cover the items that need to be covered because between the increased height, the shading of the neighborhood, the changing of the character of the neighborhood, I have a lot of concerns about it. There's also a street tree in the sidewalk that at some point was sawed off at the bottom, which should be replaced. Yes?
My building got painted.
You need to speak to the microphone, sir. Introduce yourself.
And you need to speak into the microphone, please?
My name is Ganmail Singh Nehal. My property got painted off just last year before that fire. It's got new paint, it's got new windows, double-pane window.
Was that the property on Peabody Street as well?
My property is a lot better shape than neighborhood.
Is the property on Peabody Street also painted?
Yeah. I don't know who, anybody can go and look at the property, it's in better shape than my neighborhood. You can see my next door. I don't know, everybody knows that, no, I don't have to tell you.
We're familiar with that one.
My property is a lot better than all the neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyway, so, there's a motion, do you want to clarify the items that you're concerned, that you want to have?
I think the only one that I'm unclear on is the upgrading and maintenance of the property. What does that mean?
It means that we have laws already in place to dealing with blight and that kind of stuff and that probably would be, fall under that category?
Well, this property hasn't been targeted by the community preservation committee.
No, I mean, if it gets to that stage, we have ordinances and laws that apply to that kind of thing.
So you're saying, so you're saying the maintenance and upgrading of the property would not be one of your conditions?
Wouldn't be one of mine, no.
Considering that they are asking for conditional use that they're not automatically entitled to, I think that it would be appropriate to
That sounds familiar.
Have upgrading of the entire parcel.
I just need to know what that means so we are sure we're looking for it. You mean paint the rear?
I think a level, all I could suggest would be a level of maintenance that.
Ongoing maintenance?
Well, current maintenance. Gail said that she drove by and it appeared poorly maintained.
Well, the front's under construction, it's hard to tell. The rear is not looking very good.
Well, we have a standard condition of approval. I don't know if this is enough, but it says, "The site and improvements shall be well-maintained and kept free of litter, debris, weeds and graffiti." And then it says, "Any graffiti should be removed in 72 hours." All landscaping improvements must, shall be maintained in a healthy growing conditions at all times.
Then is this, can we have this be official notice that these things need to be upgraded on the parcel that fronts on the Peabody to maintain the property in good condition? If we've got weedy conditions and broken pavement, doesn't that qualify into that condition?
We can clarify this last, this maintenance condition to say that, you know, any existing weeds and other debris shall be removed or something like that.
Well, I guess re-landscaping or upgrading the landscaping on the entire parcel would take care of a lot of these. take care of a lot of these problems.
We're asking for, as, as a new condition of approval, asking for a new landscaping plan, that would be to the.
The entire site.
Be to the satisfaction of the planning director. Are we not?
Yeah, you have a condition of approval. It's page six, number 4A2, that says, "Prior to issuance of a building permit, applicant shall submit a detailed onsite landscaping and irrigation plan for the approval of the planning director." And we can just clarify in there that it's for the entire parcel.
Of the entire site.
For the entire site.
And, and the street tree on Ocean Avenue?
Well, you mean if that tree is to be removed?
There, it's been cut off at the ground level. There's a stump.
How recently was that done?
I don't know, but there's a tree well with a stump in it.
Okay, the only, my only hesitation about that, and we can certainly do that, is that that's on the public right-of-way, so that would be, the public works director would have to deal with that.
Someone should deal with that.
Okay. So you want a new street tree? Right?
I'm sure she does.
Okay, got it, new street tree.
Otherwise, anybody gets to come outside down the road and replace it.
Well, we have an ordinance that addresses that. You don't need a use permit.
We have laws that address that.
Right. Okay, ready?
I think, I don't have any more.
Okay, let me just recap here. We have a motion, and actually, I should ask Commissioners Hoff and Jermaine, who make or in seconder, seconder of the motion, are you in agreement with these?
Yes.
Things, okay. Landscaping in the entire site, three-foot fence, no more than three-foot fence in front with less concrete, best management practices for stormwater, which is standard. Existing weed and debris shall be removed, and a new street tree in front.
Fine.
Right? Okay. On, you ready for the vote? On the motion, Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Flores?
No.
Commissioner Jermaine?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Jeffrey?
Aye.
Chair, Vice Chair Donaldson?
No.
Four ayes, two noes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.